Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the committee of the whole meeting. This is December 10th, 2018, and I'd call the meeting to order with the fact that we have all aldermen in attendance this evening. Before we begin this evening, I'd just like to make the community aware of the passing of Terry Dakota. Many of you recall Paul Dakota that served the city of Geneva for a number of years as an alderman, and Terry was very involved in the Fox Valley as well. If you'd please bow your head and we'd observe a moment of silence. Thank you. This evening, we have the pleasure of introducing one of our newest police officers who will be taking his oath, Travis Lang. I see that you've joined us as well as your family, and with that, if you'd like to come to the podium, you'll have the privilege of being grilled by the mayor just as all other police officers. Welcome.
Travis, how are you, sir? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's fine. Welcome. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
You've probably been prefaced on this.
A little bit.
Did you watch other videos as well?
I haven't. I haven't. They warned me, though.
Did they? Who's "they"?
I can't say.
Can't say? Well, I think it's only fair that we begin tonight's introduction by introducing your family. So would you do us the honors of introducing?
Yep. This is my wife, Elizabeth. She's holding Isla. She's one and a half, almost two, and then Lucy is sitting right there. She's four.
So Lucy and Isla, and I've been advised by you that Mrs. Lang is also expecting.
Yes.
Apparently, the due date is April 4th.
Yeah.
And we already understand it's going to be a boy.
Yes. Yep.
Very exciting. But perhaps as exciting as today is Mrs. Lang's birthday.
It is.
So you got out on dinner tonight, didn't you?
Yes, I did. I did.
Now, you will be happy to know that Alderman Marx has agreed to watch the children, so if you guys want to go out afterward, so not an issue. So Travis, is this a second career for you?
It is.
Because according to my cheat sheet, you were in the construction industry.
Yes, correct.
And one of your hobbies is remodeling residential homes.
Yep.
Well, this is going to be a long night here, Mr. Chairman. He's like, are you remodeling your current home?
I am. We're selling our one in Yorkville, and then we're remodeling one in St. Charles that we're planning on moving into.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
Whereabouts in St. Charles? Just east of the river?
Wild Rose.
Wild Rose. Wow. You know, what they've done with that nuclear waste site is...
I got a great deal.
You got a heck of a deal, didn't you? Utility bills are nothing.
Yeah.
So tell us about Cedarville College in Ohio. That's where you met Elizabeth.
Correct. Yep. She's from Maryland, and I drug her back to Illinois. Yep. Got a business management degree.
And did you meet freshman year? Did you meet?
Senior. Well, probably met junior, but we started dating senior.
Is that right? And what did you do at Cedarville besides wait three years to meet Elizabeth?
It's about it. No, did business management with the full intention of taking over the family business.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Did you play sports there or any extra cricket activities?
A lot of intramurals.
Yeah.
Soccer, basketball.
What's your favorite sport?
Basketball.
Now, it says here you also like to ride dirt bikes.
Yeah.
Does St. Charles have a lot of courses that you can ride?
No. The kids have kind of taken up a lot of my time, so I don't get to too much. But after I got done with college, I used to race them and...
Oh, really?
Yeah, motocross out in Arizona.
No kidding? Because you said your parents are out in Arizona.
Retired out in Arizona.
Retired out there, from Big Rock to Arizona.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow. You sure are a talkative guy, Travis. It's like, so what's it like to grow up in Big Rock, Illinois?
Oh, it's great. Most of my friends are farmers and just all country and do whatever you want, you know? It's in the nature and yeah, so...
You're a hunter as well?
Yep.
And you hunted while growing up?
No, actually, I didn't really start hunting until I met my wife, and her dad's an avid hunter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he kind of got me into it.
Wheaton Academy. So you commuted from Big Rock to Wheaton Academy. What was that like?
It was awful. It was a 45-minute drive and yeah, so it was worth it.
Yeah?
Totally, but yeah, it was rough.
Still our friends from high school, of course?
I do.
Do they all still live in the area?
No, the one actually lives, the St. Charles house is like seven minutes from him, so we're looking forward to hanging out with them more.
So your friends from Wheaton Academy, did they expect you ever to ever, ever, ever choose a career in law enforcement?
Probably.
Really?
Yeah. Well, not, yeah, being that, you know, with the family business and construction and everything, so...
Why law enforcement?
You know, a couple of different reasons made me start looking at it first. Our family business works at Caterpillar and Aurora. They're closing down the plant. But also more just, I'm 32, I've got a family and looking more into, you know, purpose and legacy in my life and trying to help others more, so...
Now, with two daughters and, of course, a son on the way.
Yep.
It's unlikely that many young men will be courting the daughters at the house knowing that you're a cop. Is that part of the plan?
I hope so, yes.
Ben?
Yep.
Travis, when someone says to you, what motivated you to join the force? What's your answer?
Basically, what I said. I'm at a stage in my life where, you know, I've worked hard, but looking back, it's kind of, you know, what has that hard work done? Has it just improved my life, my family's life, which is a great thing, but there's more to life about that than just improving my own. You know, there's a lot of people in need, you know, a lot of people that aren't as blessed as we are that I would love to help, so...
And when your girls look up at Dad, what do they see? What do you think they see?
Someone that can fix everything. Their toys when the heads pop off and yeah, someone who's always there for them and willing to play with them and get down on my hands and knees and let them ride on my back as a horse and all that good stuff, so...
Now, you have other fans here as well.
I do.
Yeah, yeah, don't name them. Just...
Stacy, come on. Get out of the darkness. This is Stacy. I work with her.
Hi, Stacy.
Yep, and I heard her two daughters, Deegan and Thadom.
Yeah, from Oswego. Very nice. They were the first ones here tonight.
First time I've been on time.
Words of wisdom to those who are perhaps considering a career in law enforcement? What did you find to be the most difficult, or I should say, what do you expect the most difficult part to be?
Probably, you know, you're going to see things that, you know, it's tough to see. Being able to process that is probably going to be the most difficult, and finding healthy ways to kind of relieve stress, I think, is really important, so...
You know, a good way to relieve stress is just to pretend you're a horse and have the...
Exactly. Play with your kids.
So after this evening, where do you head to?
Home.
Well, not literally. I mean...
It's bedtime.
Off to the academy?
Yeah. Yeah, January 7th, start the academy, so take the fitness power test next Monday.
Is the fitness power test taken here?
It's at the Law Enforcement Academy at College of the District.
COD, yeah. That's a heck of a facility, isn't it?
I haven't seen it. I've just seen pictures online.
Oh, yeah, it's all outside? It's really, it's nice. You're going to do well.
Only shorts, right?
It's only shorts and tank tops.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Alderman Maladra wanted me to ask, are you a Cubs fan or a White Sox fan?
A Vikings fan. I don't follow baseball.
So you follow...
I'd be a Cubs fan if I were to be a fan. I'm sorry.
Vikings, as in football?
Yeah. Really, that's the only sport that I follow.
Did you play in high school?
No.
You did not?
No.
Any last-minute comments you'd like to add?
No, I just thank you for this opportunity and...
Well, it hasn't happened yet, so...
I'm looking forward to serving the city of Geneva.
We're looking forward to having you. Any questions or comments from the dais?
Alderman Bruno.
Well, important to your appointment here is can you hang an old mortis hinge door?
I'd have to see it.
I have been looking. But welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your middle name is Worley.
Whitley.
Well, then, there's a typo. Or I can't read it. Whitley. Are you familiar with the Whitley family of Geneva?
No.
Some of, I would argue, some of the greatest basketball players, girls' basketball players that Geneva's ever seen.
Cross-country, too.
And cross-country and golf. Extraordinary.
As a last name, I've never heard that.
Isn't that wild?
Yeah.
Now, is Whitley a family name?
Yeah.
I'm assuming it is. You know what's interesting about the Whitleys of Geneva? They were actually cops and they went into the construction. They... Okay, soon to be Officer Lang. Who would you like to have join you while we administer the oath?
My wife and two daughters. That's good.
Awesome.
Turn this around.
Oh, yeah. I didn't do it.
If any family members would like to take a photograph, feel free to come forward.
Come on up there, Mom. You ready? That's it? Kindly raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Travis Lang.
I, Travis Lang.
Having been appointed to the position of police officer.
Having been appointed to the position of police officer.
In the city of Geneva, County of Kane, afore said.
At the city of Geneva, County of Kane, afore said.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The city of Geneva code of ordinances.
The city of Geneva code of ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of position of police officer.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations. And we have a document for you to sign.
I'll just sign.
It's a birthday card to Elizabeth. Did he already get you one?
Sign right there for me.
Did he? Good job.
Great. Welcome aboard.
Any of you that are interested in leaving at this point in time, you're free to leave. Yeah. Actually, the Vikings are playing this evening. As a Bear fan, we want to wish them a lot of luck. First item, item three, approve committee of the whole minutes from November 26th, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Any discussion? If not a voice vote, it would be sufficient. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. Item four, items of business. Item A recommends spending the rules to permit Alderman Kilburg to be the committee of the whole chairman for this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by McGowan. A voice vote would be sufficient. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item B, recommend draft ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter II, liquor control, Section 4 to 9, license renewal deadline related to renewal requirements. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Radecki, seconded by Maladra. Discussion.
You want me to give a brief?
If you would, please.
Sure. So this ordinance currently in the city code requires a criminal history check both at the time of application and renewal for liquor licenses. This amendment would eliminate the requirement for a criminal history check at the time of renewal, except for any new or additional owner, shareholder, or manager. Should there be a change in the criminal history of a current licensee, we are updated by the FBI, thus eliminating the need to duplicate services. So essentially, this just cuts down the amount of paperwork and administrative requirements for renewals. Sorry, and we have Sergeant Rivera and Jean Fornari are both here if there are any additional questions.
Okay. Other questions? Doesn't appear we have any. There were some questions that were addressed to staff, and those questions and answers can be found at the city's website. I'm Alderman Burkhardt.
So, and I think this was addressed in the questions, but basically, the background checks done of an owner, then say the owner gets in trouble with the law, we would get notified, the city would get notified by the FBI or...
Eli can expound on that if you'd like.
So if it is, if there's an update to that criminal history...
If you'd please introduce yourself.
Yes. Sergeant Eli Rivera, I'm the administrative sergeant.
Thank you.
So if we do have an update on that criminal history, what they will do is they will send us basically the same fingerprints with the criminal history attached to it or the result of their fingerprints, and I will then notify Jean, and then the mayor will also be notified that there has been a change, and then the mayor would dictate what action he would take from there.
So this will cut down on quite a few of these checks you've had to do every year because you've been doing the same people checking them every year, right?
Correct. Yes. That was the intent of making the modification to the code.
Good. Thank you.
Will that also eliminate the $50 background fee, or is that still a, would that still be a charge to the city?
There's a $27 fingerprint processing fee. That's what we would do.
Initially, yeah.
Correct. And then Jean, I think, there's also a charge.
Anytime there's a new applicant, that fee is charged.
Okay, so when they do the check, then they would do a, they do a search of all of our applicants on an annual basis, then?
No, so if the, if a new owner or a manager changes, we would do a background check, but those that are currently licensed, unless we get notified from the FBI, we don't need to do anything. They will notify us anytime there's a hit on those fingerprints.
So if there would be a hit, there would be a $50 fee with that then as well, or not?
Oh, no, no. At that point, it would be a determination whether or not that was something related to the liquor license and whether they keep their license.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Radecki?
Yeah, I guess my, how would we know if somebody, I've got a business and it's been rocking along for five years, and I get a partner, and he's a silent partner or whatever. I mean, how does the city know that another form of ownership has come into this business? How would we be aware of that?
So we have to renew the licenses every year. So every year, they have to reapply for their liquor license. On that application, they will list any additional individuals that they have added to as shareholders. So by going through that, we will know that someone has been added. If not, I already have a list that composes everybody who's been on those licenses prior. So anything new, Jean usually says there's been an additional individual added to the license, therefore, I have to conduct an entire background check on that person.
But we have to rely upon them telling us, though, that they have a...
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, not entirely. We also hear from the state of Illinois liquor control when they need to renew their state application. They always verify ownership at that time, and if it's not matching up with what we have on file, then they've got an issue, but there's a backup.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Bruno.
To follow up on that, so I presume if they willfully withhold that information of a silent partner owning that liquor license, that's a criminal offense, I presume?
It's not, it's, it wouldn't be a criminal offense, but then it would be brought up to the mayor, and him being the chair of the board would be the one to determine if there's some kind of punishment that needs to be issued.
Thanks.
Okay. Any others? If not, I take it we're probably ready to vote. If you'd please read the rolls.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhardt?
Aye.
Michael Clements?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Here is, it's unanimous. Item B, recommended draft ordinance amending Title IV, oh, excuse me, item C, recommend draft ordinance for 2018 annual tax abatements. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Discussion.
Sure.
Would you give us an explanation of this?
Sure. The city annually abates taxes for various bond issuance, which are required to be repaid by property taxes or user fees. The abatement here would remove the debt service payments from the property tax bill and requires that the bonds to be paid from the appropriate fund with user fees, for example, electric or water. This reduces the overall property tax levy by approximately $2.4 million. Again, this evening, we have Rita Cruz, our finance manager, who is here to answer any additional questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from any of the aldermen? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. If you'd please read the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhardt?
Aye.
Michael Clements?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Here is, it's unanimous. Item D, recommend draft resolution authorizing purchase of one Pierce Enforcer fire engine through Global Emergency Products HGA-C Consortium at an estimated cost of $618,423. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Clements, seconded by McGowan. Discussion. I see we have the chief with us this evening if there are any questions. If you want to explain what we're doing as well.
Sure. As included in the current fiscal year budget, this request is to purchase a new fire engine to replace Engine 209, which will be 28 and a half years old at the time of surplus. The estimated cost includes a prepayment discount of 2.8%. We're recommending this as our current investments are earning 2.32%, so, and as Chair Kilburg indicated, Fire Chief Antonori is here if there's any additional questions.
Since you came out this evening, maybe we could ask you at least one question? Obviously, this is a huge improvement to our equipment, something that's been needed for some time. What are some of the technologies on this new fire truck that would eclipse the truck that we're retiring? You might highlight some of the technology. Obviously, firefighting has changed dramatically over the last two decades.
Yeah, over a period of 28 and a half years since we purchased this vehicle, this vehicle that we're retiring was purchased in 1991. Lighting, cage safety, a lot of the aspects of the personnel safety. This was our, this engine we retired was our first one that we bought was an enclosed cab. Before then, we had open cabs, so we made that move. Now, it's proceeded forward even, even more so. The pump technology, the ergonomics of bringing the hose beds down so that the firefighters are no longer stepping up and jumping down on their knees so they can pull hose back in will, will actually suppress so that we can grab things easier. Electronics. Fire engines are designed by standards to, they should serve 15 years in frontline and 25 years total, and after 25 years, they need, so we're beyond that. The last two we've done have gone beyond 30 years. This is the first time we've actually gotten that closer to 25, so this should serve us well for 25-plus years in service, so...
Good. This is something that we've been anticipating for some time, and we've been really sort of saving toward. You might elaborate on that a little bit as it relates to our budgeting process and how we, how we, how we finance a major undertaking like this.
Several years ago, in the forward-looking 10-year plan, we placed this engine on the budget to be thought about, thought through. We spent, after that was approved a year ago, we spent the past year specing it and getting it set up, and this will bring our engine fleet in compliance with the current standards, so we will be in, one of our frontline engines will be four years old, this will be zero. Our second run will be 15 and our reserve will be 20, so we'll be all compliant in that aspect, so we're very pleased with that process.
Great. Great. Some additional questions? Alderman Radecki?
Yeah, I thought it was interesting. It's not the fire engine, it's the options, it looks like. There's 13 pages of options for this baby. Who comes up with that? I mean, do you guys, you know, make it known to the manufacturer what you want? Is there a package that is generally recognized as what's current today and what, you know?
So this is the NFP 1901, standard for automotive type fire apparatus back in the day when they used to be cars. It's 100 and 200 pages. They're built to this standard. They're standard packages. We can modify those, cut things out that we don't need, add things in that we do need. So we spent time, we went to shows and took a look at modern fire engines and took a look at what we would like and what we took out. So as an example, to simplify the engine, we're no longer going to carry a generator onboard, you know, because almost all the, actually, all of our equipment now is battery-operated, so we can operate without a generator. We also took off onboard foam, which is a standard thing now that people are doing because onboard foam systems are a maintenance nightmare. And rather than doing that, we deleted that, which simplified the engine, made it less complex for long-term maintenance. So you can think of a fire engine a little bit as a machine rather than a, it's a machine on wheels rather than a car that's, that drives around. So it's a complex, interacted machine that just happens to get there on rubber tires. So, yeah, we spent the past better part of the year going through that spec. A lot of that on there is standard, and then deletions and adds to meet our specific needs of the community. Sure.
Any other questions?[1689.82]
So it's a complex, interactive machine that just happens to get there on rubber tires. So, yeah, we spent the past better part of the year going through that spec. A lot of that on there is standard, and then deletions and adds to meet our specific needs of the community. Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready to vote. If you'd please read the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhardt?
Aye.
Michael Clements?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Curious, it's unanimous. Item E, recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of a third amendment to an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of St. Charles and the City of Geneva related to Parkside Reserves Water System Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno?
Second.
Seconded by Marx. Discussion. If you'd give us an overview?
Parkside Reserves is a three-unit townhome development in the City of St. Charles located just north of Wheeler Park on the west side of the road. Although the project is in St. Charles, the developer would like to connect to the City of Geneva's water system. Providing water through the City of St. Charles system would require an unreasonably expensive main extension and disruption of Geneva Road, which is Illinois Route 31. As outlined in the intergovernmental agreement, the developer is responsible for all costs associated with the proposed connection to the water system. This evening, we have Director Babica with us to answer any additional questions.
Looks like we have one. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. I don't know if this goes to Director Babica or, oh, I guess our finance is not here. The, so this property is a non-annexed property getting water. They will be paying the non-eligible.
Do, and we have agreements with, with St. Charles too, as far as some of the properties that are on our lines versus their lines. But I mean, that's, that's it in a nutshell. But yes, I guess the short answer, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions as it relates to this? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. So this is the third amendment. I was just curious to know what the first and second amendments were, if you could refresh my memory?
I don't know.
Okay. I was curious more than anything. Okay, that would be, that would be fine. Thank you.
I think there are other projects, aren't there, Rich? I think this is not the first time that there's been an intergovernmental agreement with St. Charles for sharing services. But there has been some modifications on this one. I know I've seen it three times, so maybe it is the third possible amendment. But it's gone back and forth with some modifications by the developer, I think with St. Charles, because they were approving the project, and the utility aspect is only, is really secondary to that process.
Well, we'll look it up, and as soon as we have it, we'll send it out to you and also post it on the city's website.
Thank you.
Any other questions relating to item E? If not, looks like we're ready to vote. If you'd read the roll, please.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhardt?
Aye.
Michael Clements?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Curious, it's unanimous. Item E, recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of a third amendment to an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of St. Charles and the City of Geneva related to Parkside Reserves Water System Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno?
Second.
Seconded by Marx. Discussion. If you'd give us an overview?
Parkside Reserves is a three-unit townhome development in the City of St. Charles located just north of Wheeler Park on the west side of the road. Although the project is in St. Charles, the developer would like to connect to the City of Geneva's water system. Providing water through the City of St. Charles system would require an unreasonably expensive main extension and disruption of Geneva Road, which is Illinois Route 31. As outlined in the intergovernmental agreement, the developer is responsible for all costs associated with the proposed connection to the water system. This evening, we have Director Babica with us to answer any additional questions.
Looks like we have one. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. I don't know if this goes to Director Babica or, oh, I guess our finance is not here. The, so this property is a non-annexed property getting water. They will be paying the non-eligible.
Do, and we have agreements with, with St. Charles too, as far as some of the properties that are on our lines versus their lines. But I mean, that's, that's it in a nutshell. But yes, I guess the short answer, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions as it relates to this? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. So this is the third amendment. I was just curious to know what the first and second amendments were, if you could refresh my memory?
I don't know.
Okay. I was curious more than anything. Okay, that would be, that would be fine. Thank you.
I think there are other projects, aren't there, Rich? I think this is not the first time that there's been an intergovernmental agreement with St. Charles for sharing services. But there has been some modifications on this one. I know I've seen it three times, so maybe it is the third possible amendment. But it's gone back and forth with some modifications by the developer, I think with St. Charles, because they were approving the project, and the utility aspect is only, is really secondary to that process.
Well, we'll look it up, and as soon as we have it, we'll send it out to you and also post it on the city's website.
Thank you.
Any other questions relating to item E? If not, looks like we're ready to vote. If you'd read the roll, please.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhardt?
Aye.
Michael Clements?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Radecki?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Curious, it's unanimous. Item B, recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of a third amendment to an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of St. Charles and the City of Geneva related to Parkside Reserves Water System Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno?
Second.
Seconded by Marx. Discussion. If you'd give us an overview?
Parkside Reserves is a three-unit townhome development in the City of St. Charles located just north of Wheeler Park on the west side of the road. Although the project is in St. Charles, the developer would like to connect to the City of Geneva's water system. Providing water through the City of St. Charles system would require an unreasonably expensive main extension and disruption of Geneva Road, which is Illinois Route 31. As outlined in the intergovernmental agreement, the developer is responsible for all costs associated with the proposed connection to the water system. This evening, we have Director Babica with us to answer any additional questions.
Looks like we have one. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. I don't know if this goes to Director Babica or, oh, I guess our finance is not here. The, so this property is a non-annexed property getting water. They will be paying the non-eligible.
Do, and we have agreements with, with St. Charles too, as far as some of the properties that are on our lines versus their lines. But I mean, that's, that's it in a nutshell. But yes, I guess the short answer, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions as it relates to this? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. So this is the third amendment. I was just curious to know what the first and second amendments were, if you could